Thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, July 17th of 2018. The time is 6:00 PM. The Board of Commissioners are sitting, opening up public hearings regarding Resolution Number 2334. This is a resolution to take forgone taxes as required by state statute. We're here to have a public hearing and obtain input from the public regarding the proposed use of forgone. To let everybody know kind of the procedure tonight, what we'll be doing is I will open up the public hearing here momentarily, and I'll read into the record the resolution that's being proposed. This has not been voted on yet. This is what is being proposed. After the resolution is read into the record, then we will hear presentations from, starting, I believe, with Kathleen Graves. Is that correct? You're going to give us kind of an overview. Thank you. And then we'll also hear from the parties affected by the resolution, which would include mainly the courts and the public defenders, prosecuting attorneys, kind of their general thoughts as far as presentation goes, and then at that point, we'll open it up to the public for public comment. As we do in any public hearing, those wishing to testify will allow you three minutes of testimony. We ask that you stick to the schedule. I don't know how many people are going to want to testify, but we want to ensure that everybody who wants to testify will have that opportunity. So, before we get going, those wanting to testify, did we have signup sheets back there?
Yes.
Okay. There's some small sheets back there that, basically, general information we need for our record, that if you'd like to testify, if you'd please fill that out and bring it up to Judy, our clerk over here, and then she'll bring them over to me, and I'll call folks as we get those. I would also ask that, me included, that if you reach down and turn off, or at least mute your phone, so that we have no interruptions through the evening. I'd appreciate that. So I will open up the public hearing. I have about 6:04 PM. Is that about what you've got? Okay. I'll open the public hearing at 6:04 PM, and allow me to read the resolution that's being considered into the record. This is Resolution 2334, a resolution to take forgone taxes. This resolution is adopted by the Board of Ada County Commissioners to take $3,025,600 in forgone taxes for the specific purposes of, one, supporting the costs associated with an additional courtroom on the second floor of the Ada County Courthouse in the amount of $1,570,000; two, the costs associated with audio/video upgrades in all of the courtrooms in the Ada County Courthouse in the amount of $475,600; and, three, the costs associated with the acquisition of real property for expansion of the Ada County Jail and public safety facilities in the amount of $980,000 for the fiscal year 2019 budget. Whereas the Board of Ada County Commissioners has the power to recover forgone taxes pursuant to Idaho Code 63-802-1E, and whereas the Board of Ada Commissioners wishes to take forgone taxes in the amount of $3,025,600 for the following specific purposes: to support the costs associated with an additional courtroom on the second floor of the Ada County Courthouse in the amount of $1,570,000; and, two, to support the costs associated with audio/video upgrades in all of the courtrooms in the Ada County Courthouse in the amount of $475,600; and, three, to support the costs associated with the acquisition of real property for the expansion of the Ada County Jail and public safety facilities in the amount of $980,000. And whereas legal notice of a public hearing regarding the use of forgone taxes was duly published on July 10th, 2018, and whereas a public hearing was held on Tuesday, July 17th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the public hearing room of the Ada County Courthouse, 200 West Front Street, Boise, Idaho, and whereas $3,025,600 is less than 100% of the increase in taxes originally forgone from prior years. Therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to the authority of Idaho Code 63-802-1E, the Board of Ada County Commissioners hereby certifies that $3,025,600 in forgone taxes shall be used for the specific purposes of supporting the additional costs associated with the additional courtroom, the courtroom audio/video upgrades, and the acquisition of real property for the Ada County Jail and public safety facilities in the fiscal year 2019 budget as described herein. And then it states approved and adopted this blank day of blank 2018, Board of Ada County Commissioners. Again, folks, this has not been settled on. This is the resolution that we are considering and taking under consideration that we will vote on. I did, before we started the meeting today, I did forget to let everybody know that we are streaming this live. For those folks who are joining us on the Internet, we wanted to let you know that. But at this point, I will turn it over for Kathleen Graves to give us just a short thought process on where we're headed. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Ada County currently has $12,569,260 in forgone, and as referenced in the Resolution 2334, $3,025,600 of forgone is being considered for the following projects: $1,570,000 for a new courtroom on the second floor of the courthouse; $475,600 to complete the AV equipment upgrades in all courtrooms; and $980,000 for the acquisition of real property for the jail and public safety facilities. If you adopt Resolution 2334, the amount of increase for a homeowner with a home of $200,000 of taxable value, that's the average home, would be $13.20 for the year. Do you have any questions before I turn it over?
Okay. Any questions for Kathleen?
No, sir.
No? Who are you turning it over to?
I'm going to turn it over to Judge Hippler, the Deputy Administrative District Judge, to give you more information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Hippler?
Thank you and welcome, Your Honor.
Chairman, Commissioners, with the, first, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. I would say on behalf of Judge Melissa Moody, the actual Administrative District Judge for this district, she sends her regrets for not being able to be here tonight. This conflicts with the Administrative District Judges Conference. The Supreme Court requires the Administrative District Judges to attend, which is currently taking place in another part of the state. I also want to thank the Trial Court Administrator's Office for their help in putting together tonight's presentation. Ada County's population has, as you know well, increased greatly since the early 2000s, and it continues to increase with no sign of abatement. The increase has had a direct impact on the courts, as it has other essential services. Our request today is based upon our mandated duty as judges and our responsibility to provide Ada County citizens justice in a timely, fair, and impartial manner. At a minimum, as a stop-gap measure, we need to build a courtroom with chamber space and upgrades to the audiovisual systems installed in the courtrooms. So what we're asking for, as you're aware, is one new courtroom on second floor with associated chambers, and then upgrades to the technical equipment throughout the courtrooms in the building. And I will talk more about those specific proposals in a few minutes, but first I want to give a little background and context to frame this request. This slide demonstrates a historical perspective of the Ada County Courthouse and the needs related to judges in courtrooms. Even though we refer to the building as the Ada County Courthouse, as we know, the courthouse is a multi-purpose-use building. This means the building is occupied by the courts, the clerks' offices, the prosecutor, the public defender, county administrative offices, such as Developmental Services, Department of Administration, and the Treasurer's Office, to name but a few. When the courthouse was opened to the public in 2002, there were 22 judges assigned to work here in Ada County. We had nine district judges and 13 magistrates at this courthouse building. We also used senior judges to cover overflow hearing and trials. In 2002, we had 23 courtrooms. Now, not all courtrooms are created equal. Courtrooms vary by size and use that they can be put. So if we're doing math and keeping score, when we started, we had 22 judges here and 23 courtrooms. So we're going to show you a few of the courtrooms that I'm sure you're familiar with, but for others who may not be. This is courtroom 510. 510 is a 12-person jury courtroom. It's located on the fifth floor of the building. We have seven 12-person jury courtrooms. Only four of those are designed to accommodate defendants who are in custody, and so that, and in cases of a felony or a civil lawsuit in district court, it is required by statute that a 12-person jury be used. Next, you'll see courtroom 207. 207 is a six-person jury courtroom located on the second floor. If the case is a misdemeanor, it can be heard by a six-person jury, and we have six six-person jury courtrooms in the building. Next picture is courtroom 206. This is a non-jury courtroom. Because of the size of the courtroom, we can assign a judge with multiple cases for non-jury trial matters and their court calendar to be there for the bulk of the day. Lastly, you'll see one of the small hearing rooms, what we call the closet courtrooms. These are truly very small courtrooms. We only can use these for cases that have two parties involved. Typically, we can't use them for any criminal cases because they just are not secure in terms of being able to bring in a custody defendant in there. We do it on occasion because we have to, but we prefer not to. There are only two pews in the gallery, which limits the attendance of witnesses, spectators, and victims. Limited space means limited usefulness. We only use these courtrooms for single hearings, but not a calendar that has multiple hearings scheduled at the same time. Despite the limitations on these courtrooms, we use them daily based upon sheer need. This picture was taken at a time when one judge had just finished a case, and the next judge was going in to take the bench on their case. One of the problems with these courtrooms in particular is if we're involved in a case that there's a lot of animosity between the parties, as we get in some of the civil cases, for example. You can see we are co-mingling all the people together there in very tight quarters, which is, it's a security risk and is a concern. So I want to move on in time to 2007. In 2007, we grew as a district here in this courtroom, or pardon me, this courthouse, to 25.4 judges. And no, I'm not a 0.4 of a judge, but we received in that timeframe a new district judge and 2.4 new magistrates. The 0.4 refers to the Boise County magistrate who comes over and covers cases here two days a week. To accommodate this growth, we constructed a new courtroom. That courtroom is depicted here. It is courtroom 400. The size of the courtroom allows us to schedule theoretically a great variety of hearing types and jury trials, though I will say it is in terrible need of technical upgrades. It's referred to as the courtroom in Amityville because poltergeists seem to make the technology fail every time in that courtroom. It is useful, though, for complex civil jury trials where we have multiple parties. It is useful for selecting juries in high-profile cases where we need to bring in like 200 jurors in a, for example, capital murder case or cases of that kind. Moving forward to 2013, our caseload increased greatly, and we received from the legislature one more district judge and two more magistrate judges. In 2013, we had 27.4 judges working in this courthouse. Additionally, we had approximately one additional full-time judge through the use of senior judge days, though often in the form of multiple judges at once, which enhances the space issues that we have with the courthouse. Despite this growth, the number of courtrooms has remained unchanged since 2007. In today, 2018, 19, fiscal year 1819, we have 28.4 judges working in this building. However, we continue to experience a steady increase in caseloads. In fact, I saw a study today that if we were to have the number of judges that other districts throughout the state have in terms of ratio to population, then we here in Ada County would have, or in the fourth district, I should say, would have anywhere from 23 to 44 magistrates total, and 14 to 21 district judges, for a total of 37 to 65 judges to serve the same population as is served in other districts throughout the state. The complexity of the cases here in the capital of the state has also increased. If our request is approved, we will have, in other words, we've put a request forward to the Idaho Supreme Court, and ultimately, we hope it to go to the legislature where we are asking, and frankly, probably under-asking at this point, for one new district judge and two additional magistrate judges. And so that would increase the number of judges as well to 31.4 judges in this courthouse. The number of senior days awarded to our district has also increased and is now comparable to three additional full-time judges working in this courthouse throughout the year, but of course, without additional courtrooms. Next, I'd like to turn to the reasons behind the need for a new courtroom and new AV equipment beyond what I think is the compelling and evident math problem that we have with number of judges compared to number of courtrooms. The missions of the court is to provide justice by ensuring a fair process that is timely, just, and impartial in the resolution of cases. We, as judges and as the judiciary, are not able to fulfill this very basic mandate without proper facilities. As you saw on the previous slides, at one time, we had more courtrooms than judges. As such, judges were able to schedule cases as it was convenient for all involved. Now, at this point, the situation is the opposite. We have far more judges than courtrooms. What does this mean? Well, it means that we cannot accommodate everybody when we should and when they need to be accommodated. Let's consider a hypothetical case of Christine. Christine, who, after having suffered a great deal of abuse and harassment, decides to get help. Christine comes to the courthouse looking to file a protective, a protection order. However, because of the lack of courtrooms, Christine is not able to appear before a judge at that time. Instead, she needs to come back at another time, and quite likely, another day. When a courtroom will be available, Christine may have to take off another day of work, arrange for additional childcare, and hopefully does not suffer an assault from her, the person from whom she's seeking protection in the meantime. Currently, there are eight judges who, on a weekly basis, handle petitions for civil protection orders and evidentiary hearings on the request for civil protection orders. These evidentiary hearings are short court trials that last anywhere from two to four hours, or sometimes even longer. During this proceeding, the judge decides whether a protection order should be granted, continued, or dismissed. When we do not have a courtroom available to hold these hearings and other hearings, citizens are not well-served. Indeed, they may be left in a dire situation, because they may have to come back again later, either on the same day or a different day, or oftentimes, they spend many hours waiting for their case to be called. And as you might imagine, this can actually become a dangerous situation, and individuals seeking a protection order may be subjected to further trauma as a result of having to sit for hours in close proximity to the person from whom they are seeking protection, or protection from that person, I should say. This next slide shows the room that we are in tonight, being used as a courtroom. The lack of courtroom has required us to ask the Commissioners for permission to use this room as a hearing room to hold court trials one day a week. Soon, we will likely need to expand that request to additional days. Since this room was not designed to be used as a courtroom, we had to use funds to make modifications so that it could be ready for such use. However, as it was not designed for trials and other court hearings, it makes those proceedings a little, frankly, awkward in here and limits what we can do. When we're using it as a courtroom, of course, other departments and organizations and outside groups are burdened by not having access to this space that they otherwise do have access to. An insufficient number and type of courtroom has had an impact on litigants' time and finances. Courtroom calendars are designed to keep in mind that only a few judges per day can have a jury trial. We've had trials continued, canceled on the same day of trial, or on the first day of trial, because a courtroom was not available. And so, in other words, people came to the courtroom ready to start a trial, but there was no courtroom available for them to have that trial in a significant civil case. And so the parties had to go home and another day selected that was at significant expense, of course, to the litigants in the form of additional attorney's fees and time to prepare the next time for a second time. Also, defendants incarcerated while waiting for a trial, perhaps only because they cannot afford bond, are forced to remain in jail longer because there are no courtrooms available in which to hold that trial. And scheduling is such that we're pushing criminal trials out to the very end of speedy because that's the availability that we have. And, you know, if you can imagine, that results in additional cost to the county and the sheriff to house that person. It results in, in some ways, additional victimization to whomever may be a victim in that case by having delay, not having their case resolved, perhaps not getting restitution ordered. And so it is not an ideal situation. The additional expense that befalls the sheriff for housing those inmates is becoming a critical issue today, as I'm sure the Commissioners are aware. The jail, the sheriff will tell you, is at capacity and overcapacity, and ultimately, the taxpayers of Ada County bear that expense of housing those defendants for longer than we would need to if we could have additional courtroom space available. Inadequate space is costly. It results in last-minute cancellations, rescheduling of proceedings, and lengthy delays in scheduling. It's not uncommon for clerks every day to be calling other clerks and asking whether the courtroom they have assigned for that day is available now so that they could go in there and preside over a hearing. If no courtroom is available, cases will have to be reset and have been reset at later times. Litigants pay their attorneys more because they need to come back, and you would be surprised to learn perhaps that the attorneys have to charge to get up to speed again the second time. And so that is additional cost. Citizens have to take off work. We've had jurors reporting for jury duty, so 75 jurors reporting for jury duty here in the building, time off taken, who were sent home because we did not have a courtroom for the trial they were scheduled to be at that day. And so that's a significant burden on the community, the employers in the community, and the taxpayers in the community. Judges and juries make decisions based upon evidence presented before them. Victims and defendants want and deserve the opportunity to bring their case to resolution. Pictures you've seen in this presentation, so, or in this slide, I should say, show some of the equipment that is installed in the courtrooms. This equipment is frankly old and outdated. Parties frequently are unable to display evidence during trials and other proceedings. We often have long delays while we get operations up to try to get the equipment fixed so it can run. I was in a jury trial today. We did that. We had to take 45 minutes out of the trial so that operations could come up to get the AV equipment able to play the evidence that the parties were trying to present. I can speak from personal experience that we've had evidence, critical evidence in serious criminal cases that could not be presented by the prosecutors because the AV equipment would not work or was not compatible with the technology that they've had. The technology is outdated and needs to be upgraded and, in some cases, replaced. I'm told that the, one of the biggest needs for the current technology is to make all of the courtrooms HDMI-compatible, which is the high-def resolution that most everything, including your phones, operate on now. The courtrooms are not all equipped to handle that technology. Operations has informed us that the upgrades would allow new HDMI Matrix switcher, whatever that is, but I'm told it's important, HDMI cabling, wireless router, media players, and amplifiers. The sound, I will tell you, in the courtrooms, and trying to listen to the audio, like jail phone calls, which is often important evidence in cases, or police-on-body video, which is also very important evidence in cases, is often very, very difficult to hear and understand on the audio equipment that we have in the courtrooms. And we sometimes have to play it over two or three times for the party, for the jurors to be able to hear it, and it is frustrating and time-consuming and frankly costly at the end of the day. So in, as a final item here, I want to show you renderings of what the proposed courtroom would look like. The courtroom would be located in the west end of the second floor. Currently, housing law clerks, I believe, are currently housed there. The courtroom and related space will be approximately 5,000 square feet, and then the next drawing is a more close-up view of the courtroom and chambers area. The plans call for a courtroom that will, it shows six jurors, but I'm told that we're going to make it a 12-person jury room so that it's more useful and adds to that need for jurors for those district court cases. It also includes two chambers for two judges on that floor, additional judges on that floor, and space for their clerks, and a jury deliberation room, which would be necessary for that additional jury courtroom. Again, in our view, this is not adding new luxury space for judges or for litigants. The proposed space is needed just to try to ebb the impact of the growth and the critical growth that we've seen and the resulting critical lack of courtroom space that we're dealing with here in this fantastic building, frankly, that is a great place to work, but needs to be upgraded to handle the demands and the growth that we are all experiencing here in Ada County. We're excited about the prospect of this new courtroom. We recognize it's not going to cure all of our problems and in many ways is a Band-Aid, but it is a necessary one. We believe it will help us better serve the citizens of Ada County. I thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and I would stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could, please.
Mr. Tibbs.
Thank you. Judge, I'm going to ask a very obvious question, and one that you might think is a little silly, but what happens if the new courtroom isn't approved?
Well, if the new courtroom isn't approved, we will be asking you to use this room more frequently. We will continue to have to cancel scheduled court times. We will continue to have to push jury trials out as far as we can, and we will continue to add additional cost delay and incarceration, frankly, on folks here in this county. And I hope that we don't have to do but that, but that's what we will have to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Visser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Hippler, thank you for an excellent presentation, and I agree with you that the need for a new courtroom, actually, I disagree with you. I think we need a lot more than one courtroom.
I would agree with your disagreement.
It's there. I don't know if you knew that I was a law clerk for District Judge Duff McKee back in 1990. Kathy knows. Those were the days when everything was spread out. It's there. That's obvious. I've also heard for years that there's a disproportionate number of magistrate and district judges in the fourth district in comparison to the rest of the state, and I think the arguments for that are sound. However, the means tonight is what troubles me, and that's the forgone matter, and I'll discuss that later. But again, thank you for an honest, fair, and excellent presentation, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. I can go one further on you. I remember, Commissioner, when you were an attorney at the Law Library.
Sixteen years.
I was in college. I worked at the Law Library shelving books, and I remember you there. So it's all come full circle.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, though, and I'm not sure if you have the answer to it, but I know we've got some IT folks here in the audience, and maybe I can just get a head nod from them, I guess. But when we're, you did a great job of your presentation, but I think what the folks need to know tonight is that this audio/video equipment that we've been talking about, that there, the need, as you had stated, to the conversion to the HDMI, I think, is the deal. deal. The majority of these AV systems that are in these courtrooms are analog, I believe. And that was the reason for the need to upgrade. Obviously, as people purchase new equipment or new computers and bring them into the courthouse, and they utilize that to try the cases, it, things just don't connect. And I believe that those equipments that are needing to be replaced were the original equipments when the courthouse was built. That was 2002?
2002.
So, it's kind of one of those situations where we just haven't kept up with the technology to present the product. So, again, thank you for your presentation tonight. Very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Kathleen, who do we have up next?
I, Mr. Chairman, I do not know. I don't know how they're.
Okay. Was there anybody else that was, that was scheduled to talk on these matters? If not, what I'm going to do is go to the, to the public testimony. So, folks, just a reminder, if you want to testify, please fill out one of these so we have a written record of who's all going to testify. They should be at the very back on a table. And again, we want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. So, again, going to public testimony, we have Clarice Jerrigan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If not, you can correct me. But if you just come up the podium, just state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes, ma'am. Go ahead with your testimony.
Well, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the proposed prison that's part of this tonight.
The proposed, I'm sorry?
The proposed new prison.
Okay.
I think that we need to start thinking differently about nonviolent offenders. I was reading in the Idaho Statesman that 20% of those incarcerated are violent offenders. At least 80% that are not violent offenders. And some percentage of that, I suppose, are the, those waiting for trial. And I'm just wondering, does a prison have to have cement block walls? Does it have to have bars? One suggestion was using the, the guard barracks. Canyon County used a tent prison for a while for nonviolent offenders. I think McCrusty mentioned that sending prisoners to other states to be incarcerated is going to cost more than actually building a prison. That was in the Idaho Statesman article. I'd hate to see our nonviolent offenders sent to private prisons that are badly run in other states. I don't, I don't think that's right. And I just mentioned too that I'm not up here because I have a relative in prison or I have friends in prison. I don't. But I, I think we could, we could solve some of those problems without sending people out of prison, out of state, and just thinking about the nonviolent offender and dealing with that differently than the violent offenders. I guess 40% or so are nonviolent drug offenders. So, I would be against building a brand-new prison, bigger prison. I think we need to be more creative about how we deal with prisoners that are not a threat to society. So, I guess that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, sir, thank you for attending tonight, ma'am.
Yeah. I didn't want to interrupt you because you need to present your testimony. I think you may be a little confused. Tonight's hearing isn't about building a new prison. That's for the state of Idaho to do. This was about the county jail.
Well, I guess I should ask then, are some of these incarcerated prisoners going to be sent out of state?
These are county jail people. They go to the county jail.
So, they aren't going to be sent out of state?
Well, they could if they were incarcerated to prison, but your first step is to jail, and then if you get convicted, then you go to prison.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could seek further, the chairman is absolutely right here, but what I think a lot of public don't realize unless they've seen their fair share of CSI or something else, that there's a difference between jail and prison.
Oh, I know the difference. No, I understood that there was going to be a new prison built.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a state matter, ma'am. Ours is, tonight's hearing, it related to, one of the matters up is acquiring extra land for the Ada County Public Safety Building where the jail is housed.
Oh, okay.
And there are significant number of, or I shouldn't say significant number, but in both institutions, there will be those held who are nonviolent offenders.
Okay. Well, I think what I said.
Thank you, sir.
Still applies to the jail and treating violent criminals differently than, than nonviolent. And yes, I did just hear about this at 5:00, and so, I didn't get all the facts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that extra offer.
I do not have anybody else signed up to testify. Is there anybody who would like to?
Richard Greenwood. I speak for myself, not for the judiciary. I'm a judge here. Judge Hibler's done a fine job of that. I just want to second what he has said and to point out that, just what Commissioner Case and Commissioner Visser pointed out, that this isn't about building a new prison. This isn't about treatment of prisoners or things like who gets to go to prison and who doesn't based upon our statutes and sentencing rules. That's for the state legislature. Even if they change those rules, it's not going to solve the problem we have because it's not just criminal cases. We have civil cases. The domestic violence and civil protection order calendar has exploded in this county. The other comment I would make is for regarding the audiovisual, most of what we have, I don't know if all of it is, but mo, and I've only been here since 2009, but most of the equipment dates back to 2002, which means it's about 2000 or 2001 technology. I don't think, if you think back on it, how much things have changed in the meantime. I had a perfectly good printer. I'm cheap. I don't like paying taxes any more than I have to. I will be paying probably more than the average increase, but I had a perfectly good printer. I had to donate, throw away for parts simply because I couldn't plug it into any of the new equipment in my home. The same is true now for the people coming in. Whether people realize it or not, the lawyers representing their clients and the citizens are typically not at the forefront necessarily, but certainly in the mainstream of technology. And that has dramatically changed. I know I'm speaking to the choir here, but for the purposes of the record, you know, I can look back, in 2002, I still had a computer that used a floppy disk. And I had floppy disks for some things that I could still use. You can't. It's not going to be long when you won't be able to play a CD wrong. That's coming. Some places, I think Amazon quit selling the blank CDs. So, we do need the technology upgrade, and we desperately need courtrooms. It just, for one thing, there is, just as a practical matter, sitting around at my desk in the morning periodically asking my clerk, "Do we have a courtroom yet?" It's not like we're underusing the facilities. It's not like I, as a judge, in the good old days where I grew up as a baby lawyer down in the 5th District, every judge had their own courtroom. Not so here. The citizens can rest assured that we are making use of every square foot of facility we currently have and then some. So, if there are any questions, but I just want to make that point.
Thank you, Judge. Any questions?
Yes, sir, and thank you for your comments tonight, sir.
I appreciate that. Okay. So, if you could bring up your slip over here to my clerk. Okay, and then if you'd state your name and address for the record, then go ahead with your testimony.
I don't doubt the need for new courtrooms, and I'm an IT guy. I understand the need for new audiovisual equipment. I definitely do. However, assessed values just this year have risen over 11.8%, and for the two previous years, according to the Idaho Statesman, they've risen 8.1% annually. I know my own personal home, since the five years that I purchased it, has gone up over $120,000 in value. And obviously, this has increased tax revenue. Now, the average cost of incarcerating someone is over $30,000 a year. No doubt, some people do need to be incarcerated. However, for nonviolent offenders, has the county looked into alternative sentencing, probation, electronic monitoring, or even alternatives to bail such as electronic monitoring? Have those alternatives been looked into? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Appreciate your testimony. Okay. Again, folks, I don't have anybody else signed up. If you would like to testify, please come forward and hand your slip to Judy, and we can get started.
So, I just think, you know, we've had some of these arguments in the legislature on forgone, going back and grabbing them and trying to figure out how to stop it. I think with the growth that's in Ada County, with the assessment, not just the growth on the new development, but also the growth or the increase in the values of everything, that the county commissioner should be able to find the money within that growth period. I mean, I look at the growth, I look at my tax bill, how that's growing. I mean, right now, I've got a homesite where I've got a mobile home on, and it's assessed at $120,000 for one acre. I wished I could get $120,000 for one acre, but I can't. But that's what it's assessed at, is the homesite. And that has all been going up for the last few years. Matter of fact, I actually found out last year that I was paying for a home that wasn't on there for the last 10 years. So, they finally took that off this year. But I really think that with the growth that we have, we, the county commissioner should be able to find the money within the existing growth, not trying to grab back money. It really defeats the purpose of the previous county commissioners who have held the line on increasing the taxes to go back and say, "I know you guys held the line. Now, we want to go back and grab all this money and tax everybody an additional amount of money." So, I would urge you not to do it with the forgone taxes. I don't argue with what, you know, what your proposal, what the needs are. I haven't looked at your whole budget, so I can't give you an analysis of where you might be able to find the $3 million, but I really would urge you not to go back to the forgone. It's going to create some other fights that we're going to have in the legislature. As you guys probably have seen and heard, we've had those several times, trying to figure out a compromise on where to go on forgone. And so, I would urge you not to go that route.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tibbs has a question.
I appreciate your testimony, but when somebody says, "We'll find it somewhere else," where is that? You say, "Find it in the existing budget." Previous commissions kicked the can down the road on a lot of different projects, a lot of different capital projects, that were desperately needed when I came on the commission almost six years ago. We've been trying to catch up. So, when we have a need for an additional courtroom and to have courtrooms upgraded and to provide property for an expansion of a jail, where do we find the money to fund that?
Well, two things. One thing, when you first came on, I believe we probably had a debt on this courthouse. And I remember when we celebrated that it was all paid off. So, what happened to that extra money? Secondly, the growth has also increased dramatically in Ada County in the last five years. That would also give you an increase. And like I say, I haven't analyzed your budget. I don't know where your budget growth is over the last five, six years. So, you know, I can't give you specifics without, you know, actually analyzing the budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow.
Commissioner Tibbs.
So, why does the legislature fund daily costs at a jail of a state prisoner at $55? Now, it's up to $75 if it goes up through a week, but realistically, it costs $90 or plus. So, the citizens of Ada County are supplementing the state of Idaho. The same is with, the same goes for misdemeanor probation. That is, by statute, is required to be funded by the fees, and yet, we can't do that, and we have to subsidize it. So, we keep getting the mandates from the state to spend money in other ways.
And I think we've had some of that discussion this past year on what the fees should be for the county for housing the inmates that belong in the prison. And I think that's been upped some, but I, I agree with you that the costs, you know, have, need to be covered by the state. But I don't know, you know, I know we've had some of that discussion. I don't know where that all ended up.
My last question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Can't you find the money somewhere in your budget to fund it adequately?
I imagine we could if we could get it passed. It's going to be up to JFAC to set that budget. There's going to be discussion coming up, you know, as far as a new prison and stuff like that within, within the funding. And I know we talked, it was probably seven, eight years ago, about building another prison, and then the population dropped off and we didn't have the need. And then it was a question whether we build a state prison or whether we have a private prison. And after the fiasco with the private prison, we've gone back to whether it's, it should be state-funded. And so, those are issues that we have to tackle, but just, we, you know, every budget in the state, you know, we've got 105 people that have to vote on it one way or another. And so, it depends on a lot of people sometimes on which county it is or who gets affected by it.
Thank you, sir.
John, thank you for your testimony.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Again, folks wanting to testify, if you can come up and hand Judy your slip there. And then if I could get you to state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead.
So, I work for the Idaho Freedom Foundation. I'm a policy analyst there. And one of the most common issues that people are coming to us with is property tax issues. And we, it seems like the number-one thing that I'm being talked about with on the phone is property tax issues. People in Ada County especially are finding that their home values are rising, and with it, their property tax is going up. So, I've been doing some research into it, and it's become more and more of a thing that I've focused on. And I was, on Thursday, I was meeting with several Ada County folks. I had three or four couples that were talking with us. One of them told us that their property tax had gone up 23% in the past two years that they've had their home. The other family said it had gone up 50% in just the past three or four years that they've had their home. Both of them had moved in recently, had just purchased these homes. And what I'm finding is that many of these people are on fixed incomes. They're not able to change the amount of money they're making. They have set their budgets going for years forward, and they're seeking predictability in where they move, in their houses, in their taxes, in their payments. And then, they're raising, and they're not sure how they're going to be able to make ends meet when they're not able to meet through taxes. So, I'm finding that with, I don't have an issue with the courthouse, with the expansion of the jail facility with the audiovisual upgrades. I think those are very important projects that need looking at. But again, it's the forgone taxes that's the issue. When you're seeing people making expectations on the future and basing their decisions on what they're expecting to come, when they see that, okay, my taxes will rise by 3% plus that new construction growth within the county, and then they have the forgone taxes that come and are added to it, I think it's a dangerous thing for individuals who are on those fixed incomes, dangerous things for people who are counting on that property tax thing the same or growing at that small amount. So, I urge you not to dip into the forgone balances for these projects.
Okay. Is that all?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
Okay. Appreciate your testimony. Folks, any additional, come on up. If you'd hand your slip over here to Judy. And if you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
I would ask the commissioners this evening if other alternatives have been looked at at thoroughly for obtaining the funds for the expansion of the courtrooms and the audiovisual upgrades, rather than using the forgone taxes. I believe those uses from what was stated are needed. I would certainly like to see some other mechanism used besides obtaining the forgone taxes. I think, as was already stated, Ada County residents are facing tax burdens that are certainly issues along with the lack of courtroom space. I don't know why defendants would have to come to the courthouse if there was no courtroom available. I mean, I know that there are situations that I can't even address when it comes to incarceration, but I certainly feel that if the county hasn't thoroughly utilized electronic monitoring for nonviolent offenders versus incarceration, that certainly would drop the funds that county has to be looking for at this point. I would, again, agree with what Mr. Van Sickle has stated. I live in Ada County. When people are saying that the tax burden has just gone up and up for them, and so I'm here tonight just to ask that that whole situation not be added on to by going back for these forgone taxes, and making this situation even harder to bear. So, again, commissioners, I hope you keep that in perspective tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Betty, I will make a comment, because you asked a question, so, and this is for the rest of the public, and I think Phil had answered it before, about have we looked everywhere for all these other things like electronic monitoring and all that? The short answer to that is yes. We have a very proactive sheriff's department, and a very proactive sheriff, and that, the sheriff combined with the courts, we do have electronic monitoring, we do have pretrial release, we do have all these, other programs are out there that are designed to reduce those populations. So if there's any question as, have we looked in those areas? We have, and they are currently in place, just so you know that. Again, anybody wanting to testify? Sharon, come on up, if you have one of your slips, if you could give it to Judy there. And again, if you'd just state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead.
Commissioner Tibbs, I believe that you were talking about a board that I served on that saved $81 million for the taxpayers in this county. The forgone balance at the time I left office was approximately $18 million and change. Since that time, it's down to $12 million. In the five years since I've been out of office, the property tax portion of the county budget has increased over 41 percent already. You are entitled to take a 3 percent increase in the property tax portion of the budget every year. You can also take the, increase the budget by the amount for, to account for the new growth in the community, the value of that new growth, as though they had been taxed previously. There is no need to take the forgone balance to fund necessary projects for this county. I think Commissioner Visser hit the nail on the head. Unfortunately, what you've done is you've taken some of the highest priority projects to have this public hearing around, rather than the county's lowest priorities. And I would suggest you take a look at the budget, the rest of the budget, and you can accommodate this $3 million worth of expenditures in the rest of the budget, cut lower priority items. The courts, the sheriff's office, they're very high priority items, and I believe that is the reason that they were chosen for this hearing tonight, and to be the subject of this resolution, so that nobody can argue with the need. How about the rest of the budget? Let's take a look at the rest of the budget and find a place where you can accommodate these expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Sharon?
No, sir.
Okay. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, ma'am.
Folks, anybody else want to testify tonight? Sheriff, did you have any additional comments regarding your jail or thoughts there?
Not unless you have questions.
Okay. I don't specifically, is the board have any questions for the sheriff?
No, sir.
Okay. I think you're off the hook, so to speak. That was a joke. I'm glad I get a couple of chuckles. Okay. Well, if there's nobody else that would like to testify tonight, I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to the board for some discussion.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tibbs.
This might go back and forth a few times, and I appreciate everybody with testifying, and, you know, what you said is very important, and I, there's kind of a common theme that kept coming out, and that's, can you find the money somewhere else? And really, we're at the point that, no, we can't. We haven't been able to. Otherwise, we would have. Nobody likes to think about using forgone, nobody likes to use forgone. A comment that was made was that a past commission left $81 million in savings. Well, the reality was, that's not true. We had $8 million in debt that we had to pay to the fund balance before we could even start funding programs. We've been paying debt back for a number of years, but at the same time, we've been able to fund some very important and absolutely desperately needed projects, like the dispatch center. We're at that point again, where because of the explosive growth that we've experienced in Ada County, we're paying the price for it now. And people, we all like to think that growth should pay for itself, but I think we all know that it takes a little time for the growth to catch up, to start paying for itself. And we're in a tough way. I mean, we're, it's, this is, I'd almost call it an act of desperation. We got no more money to spend on what's needed. It isn't, and these aren't, you know, the courtrooms and the property for the sheriff, this isn't something that is nice to have, we would want to have. This is something that is desperately needed, and we have to, we have to acquire, we have to make the changes. And the, with what is going on in the cities, there isn't a city that isn't going to be hiring additional law enforcement officers. That means that there's going to be more tickets, and more arrests, and more burden on the courtrooms, and the judges, and prosecutors, and public defenders, and the whole system. You know, 2/3 of what county money goes for is to fund the criminal justice, public safety system that we have. This is a public safety issue. And for me, and I've been at it for six years now with, working with the budgets, we have done everything we can to save, to pay off debt. The county funding now is, financially is in good shape. It wasn't when I became a commissioner. We had to make some changes, we did that. And now it's time to get the county to where it needs to be, has to be, in order to perform the constitutional and statutory mandates that's expected of county government. We're not like a city. The cities are not mandated to fund one program. If they run out of money, they can turn off the lights, they can not mow the lawns in the parks, they can close the library. It's not that way with the county. The county is mandated to spend, they're funding about 99 percent of what county funds is mandated by the Idaho Constitution and Idaho state law. We took an oath to uphold the Idaho Constitution and state laws. This is part of that, for me. So I, if there is a vote taken tonight, I plan on supporting the use of forgone. As painful as it is, I plan on supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Visser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make an opening statement, and then a follow-up after a bit. Forgone tax is a way to go beyond the 3 percent statutory cap. If we didn't have it, we wouldn't have this hearing tonight. When you go beyond that cap, you're charging more than what your first impression of the law would be, that your property taxes and the revenue generated thereby would go up 3 percent. It was used last year, it's under consideration again this year. Is there an emergency? Some could argue yes, some could argue no. But again, it gets to the principle. Is there a public safety consideration? Absolutely, without a doubt. But you know what? Take a look at the departments within Ada County, and I'll just name a few of them off. Juvenile Services, Paramedics, Development Services, Operations, the Public Defender's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, Emergency Management, Parks and Waterways, Weed, Pest and Mosquito, and there's more. Every one of those departments has an important public safety role. So the mandate is there, the challenge is to meet that mandate through reasonable means. I don't believe reasonable means were presented during budget deliberations. So when we went through those a few weeks ago, I stated my opposition. I was outvoted. But that does not mean there is another way. There is another way than forgone. If we turn it down, we'll be forced to look at the budget again. During budget deliberations, I went on the record and said that if forgone taxes were used during this budget period, period, I would withdraw my vote. That was on the record very early in this discussion, before any communication occurred between myself and any other of the commissioners. I'm not going to go back on my word. If forgone taxes are used tonight on a 2 to 1 vote, I will withdraw my vote to favor the 3 percent increase that is coming up soon for our final budget vote. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you. I guess it's my turn. You know, I've, in the past, I've very publicly stated that I'm not a big supporter of forgone. Never have been. I took exception on two occasions when we had situations that, to me, rose to the level of emergencies. The first was when we took some forgone to fund the dispatch center. To me, that was a public safety emergency, because we were at life's end on that center. When you have a point where you cannot expand even one small item in your electrical outlet in fear that you're going to blow the whole system, and you have fear that if we have a good rainstorm, that it's going to flood an area that has nothing but electrical equipment in it, that's an emergency to me. So, yes, I voted for forgone on the dispatch center. I voted for forgone last year. To me, my thought process at that time was we were dealing with a horrendous flood situation that had, that had come from the Snowmageddon, so to speak, and that we had a lot of repairs we had to do. We had roofs that were caving in from deferred maintenance. We had pathways that were torn up, and the public was demanding that we do something. So I agreed to go with forgone then. If I'm being very honest with everybody tonight, I see the need, but I don't know that I'm there to take the forgone. Quite frankly, I don't think I'm ready to take a vote tonight, because I want to give it some thought. I would rather be deliberate about my thoughts on things, and try and roll over what's been testified to tonight. I'm not going to sit up here and I'm not going to give a political speech. I have no reason to. But I can tell you that, and Sharon, this isn't meant to be directed at you or anything else. I know that prior administrations, when they had, their administration, they chose what to do there, and that was their decision. That's one of the reasons that I question my reasoning to take forgone, is it's not my job to go back and deal with prior administrations' issues or thoughts, or trying to get into their head why they did what they did. That's not my business. My business was to come into office, take consideration from there, and do the best that I could, given the information I had. A lot of, a lot of times, county commissioners, we get, we can be the hero or the zero, and I can tell you, sitting from this seat, most of the time, we get chewed out by everybody. The silent majority doesn't step forward and tell us what a great job we're doing. It's usually the people who are unhappy with us that step forward and come to meetings and call us crooks, and call us in everybody's pockets, and they have the full knowledge of what we should be doing, and why haven't you thought of this? Well, I can tell you, folks, we wouldn't be up here asking for this if we hadn't, if there was somewhere else to go, or somewhere else, if we hadn't thought of something else. This board has been very diligent in scraping and scrimping and trying to find, you know, how we pay for the needs of a county that is growing by 12,000 and 13,000 people a year. That's 1,000 people, over 1,000 people a month. And no matter how much we want to stand up on a podium and scream, saying, "No more growth," I don't know how you stop it. To me, what you deal, you do is figure out how you deal with growth, and plan for it, and do a good job of that. So I don't know where I'm at, frankly, right now, as I sit in front of you, taking forgone. I don't like it. I don't like to take it. I never have. I have taken it. So that's where I'm at. I know this needs to take some good thorough discussion between this board, because as you can see, we are at opposite ends in a variety of places. Again, I want to thank everybody who got up here and testified, and let everybody know exactly where we're at. There's a need there, folks. Now, how we fund it, that's what it comes down to. And I'm not all willing and knowing, so I don't have the answer. I'm just here presenting an option, as well as this board is. So, any further discussion from my fellow commissioners, I'd certainly love to hear some more insight into their thoughts. Do you have any further thoughts?
No, sir.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'd like to add something, sir. Indeed, it is a challenge, and as I shared earlier, they call it budget deliberations for a while, for a reason. And it happens in the legal profession, too, when someone argues a case and another side gives you the counterargument. I was not convinced in those presentations that some of our departments did an adequate job in cutting $13 million that we were over budget initially. I believe we could have found room in that budget for what's brought before us tonight. Yeah, they're one-time expenses, and you can manipulate things, and you can get a permanent increase here, and we've got to fund that next year. There's going to be increases in many things that'll be in that general budget. I'm going to have a hard time closing with this story, but this is a true story. In 1981, my parents bought a home in Eagle, Idaho. In 1981, their property taxes was $280 a year. In 1992, my father, a disabled veteran, passed away at 67 years of age. My mother has been a widow for 36 years. What has happened to her property taxes in those 36 years? Is it consistent with what the IFF is hearing, our representatives are hearing, that our property taxes are going up, 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 that our assessments are out of hand? Here's what happened, and I'll let you be the judge. My mother's 92 years old. She is legally blind. She's not driven for 16 years. And I'm glad they have that responsibility, because I love her. But what were her taxes this last year? That's an increase of over 850 percent over time. We need to get this thing under control. And I don't believe taking forgone, clawback, or whatever you call it... or whatever you call it, is the way to do it. I think we need to take a harder look at our budget. Thank you very much, and I apologize for my tears.
Thank you. Well, uh, we've come to a point, if there's no further discussion, um, quite frankly, folks, um, I don't know where we're at in this budget process. I attempted to, where's Chris at? He's hiding. Uh, I was, I was attempting to find out, uh, you know, if tonight, I mean, the legal part of taking forgone is to have a hearing and, and take testimony and listen to it. I don't know that we need to make a decision tonight. Um, obviously, we need to make a decision before we establish our, um, tentative budget, which I think is, is going to be presented here in about a week. Is that correct? Look at Kathleen, and I see a head nod.
Twenty-third, yes.
Okay. And, and I don't know if, if the board wants to, and again, gentlemen, I leave it up to you. I don't know if you want to proceed with a motion or if you want to table this until, and take it up when we take up the discussion regarding the tentative budget or, or how you want to handle this. Um, I'll, uh, Commissioner Visser?
Thank you. Well, the, the stage has pretty well been set. People know my position, people know Commissioner Tibbs' position. Um, I think that decision can be yours, sir. I respect it if you ask for more time.
Well, if, if, if you're going to ask that, my, my preference would be to, um, table a decision on this until we, uh, address the tentative budget. Uh, I think that'll give me enough time to mull over everything and all the testimony we've had, um, and, and then we can make a decision there as we proceed into the tentative budget. That's what I would prefer. Chris Rich, uh, come on up. I know that probably gives you great consternation.
Oh, well, um, Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm with Kathleen. On the 23rd, uh, we're going to present a balanced and proposed budget for the board to consider, and it'll be on the 14th of August?
Uh, July 31st, when you actually adopt a tentative budget.
Okay. You will adopt a tentative budget on the 31st of July. So on the 23rd, I'm going to be presenting to you a proposed budget that is balanced, and right now, I, I would say, with the position of the board and the amount of work it takes to put it together, I will include forgone in that, and then you gentlemen will have to decide what to do, because, uh, I, I've got to go one way or the other in the presentation on the 23rd, and so after that, on the 31st, you can, um, you have between then and the 31st to make a decision.
So we can decide to clawback on the clawback? I, I just had to use that term, I'm sorry.
Anyhow, with, with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's it.
Okay.
That makes it tough.
All right. Well, whatever. I'm prepared to make a decision one way or another if we have to tonight, but that was my ask, so, uh, again, I, I turn it over to you for a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion then, if you're prepared.
Commissioner Visser?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, based on the testimony presented tonight, based on our budget deliberation, I would move that forgone taxes not be considered as part of the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion with some discussion. Well, I, I guess if, if I'm going to be forced into a decision tonight, then, then, then I'm going to support the motion. Any further discussion?
So you're going to support not taking the forgone tonight, or?
He's supporting my motion, correct, sir?
Not to table it.
Well, the, the motion before us is to not take forgone.
That's correct.
Is there a substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, make a substitute motion.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Chairman, I would move to table, have a decision on resolution number 2334. Uh, to, uh, a date, um, we need the date, we need a date certain? Okay, date certain? Can you give me a date?
The 24th is next business meeting, or the 31st is the tentative budget.
Something before the 23rd, is what I heard?
That's what I was thinking.
No, that's the...
Well, then we could decide.
Does for Chris.
It can be after the 23rd, but before the 14th.
Before the 31st.
31st.
Won't you give me a date after 23rd?
We have our next open business meeting after that is the 24th. But if you want to continue with the other...
But we've got a time constraint with the 23rd and the 31st for the final vote? Is that correct?
What's, what's the next one after the 24th?
31st.
Give us a minute while we work through this, while we deliberate and educate ourselves.
We all going to have...
Nobody can pull that out.
We're checking calendars.
It's up to us to adopt it.
So please feel free to sing amongst yourselves.
We direct this staff to get your financing system before it's voted.
Yeah, and we, we need to get this public, so...
Just asking some questions for clarification on this. If the, uh, budget is presented as Clerk Rich presented, that is, again, a tentative budget pending bo, a vote by the board, and if we're bo, voted down at that stage because of forgone, then a new budget, i.e. without forgone, would be neat, would needed to be presented. Is that correct?
Okay. So my understanding is, is, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, on the 23rd, he has to present a balanced budget which would include, at this point, the forgone money. But it's also the board's deliberation at that time to adopt a tentative budget which could include or exclude the forgone money, which means that's our decision at that point, whether we're going to, um, use it or not. And if there's a motion, um, then he would present a tentative budget on the 30, 30th or 31st? 31st. And again, we're, at that point, we are actually voting on it to confirm, and that's where it stands. Once a tentative budget is adopted, it cannot be increased, it can only be decreased, between then and the adoption of the full budget. And I'm getting a head nod. So, that's kind of the process and procedures. Did we get a date?
Yep.
Still working on one? I did.
So motion's on the table.
We do, but we have a, we're in the middle of a substitute motion.
No, let's, let's, let's do it.
Okay. Do we have a date?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, to, uh, let me, let me start over on the resolution, the substitute motion to, uh, table, have a decision on resolution number 2334, resolution to take forgone taxes to July 24th, 2018.
Okay. Is there a second? Hearing none, I will second that motion also. Frankly, I would rather have more time than, than, than make a decision tonight, and so, given the substitute motion, I will be supporting the substitute motion. Any discussion on the substitute motion? Hearing none, all those in...
Let me just, this is a little bit strange to me, being, uh, being new and so forth. We haven't done anything close to this. So we're going to have a tentative budget presented by Clerk Rich on the 23rd, and then after that, we're going to have another discussion on whether or not to take forgone, and are we going to decide on that day, or?
Chris Rich is coming to the podium, and he's going to enlighten us.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, Board, my responsibility for, uh, the 23rd is to present a balanced budget to the board. That is not the board's budget. If you were to look at the statute, it is the budget officer's budget, and it is the information I have gathered during the deliberations and the inclinations I've, uh, received from the board. After I present that budget to you, it becomes then your budget to deal with, and on the 31st, you will adopt a tentative budget, and that will then be your budget.
Clear as mud?
Now, it throws a thing in there, is that, so your balanced budget can include forgone taxes legally?
Um, I, I think if you were to take a, a view of the statute, I could present whatever I wanted. So, for convenience sake...
You're on the record saying that. That's good enough.
So, yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, Board, for convenience sake, it's better for me to try and present the, a, a budget that is closest to, uh, what you're going to adopt. It, it, it takes us, uh, probably, what, uh, two weeks? We've been working on trying to, uh, combine and, uh, use all the information from the budget deliberations to get all the numbers to tick and tie. We're literally dealing with thousands and thousands of line items, uh, and all in the budget. So, it, from that standpoint, it is a, a laborious task. Conversely, it's going to be your budget, uh, ultimately, uh, and I think just from an administrative point of view, from my side, it's probably just, if, if you cannot make a decision this evening, which would be my druthers, uh, I will just include the forgone in there, because I think it'd be easier for you to, for us to take it out than for us to add everything back in. So that's just from an administrative point of view.
Based on that, like, I don't know if it's worth making my motion again, which, that's additional...
We've got two motions on the table. The first one that has to be heard is the substitute motion.
I'll, I'll go to the back row.
Thank you. Go hide, Chris, go hide. Uh, so administratively, the rules, I believe Roberts' rules tells us that if there's a substitute motion, substitute motion has to be taken care of first. Uh, there has to be a vote taken on that. If the substitute motion fails, then we go to the original motion for consideration. If the subs, substitute motion prevails, then you don't go back to the original motion.
Thank you, Colonel Roberts.
Well, it's just my limited knowledge of it, so, um, yeah. Further discussion?
No, that was good.
Okay.
Dave's rules of order?
I'm the chairman, I get to make up whatever I want to do. Isn't that what Chris just said?
He said the clerk can.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm kidding on that last statement. Um, okay. We do have a substitute motion. The substitute motion is to table this item for consideration to the 24th day of July at the open business meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe I seconded that. Um, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Upstayed?
I'll go aye. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a concession to forgone taxes, so I can vote aye on this measure.
Okay. So alls we're doing is just tabling this to give us a little extra time to think about this. We'll make the decision on the 24th, uh, in a, in our open business meeting. Um, and you're all welcome to come. It is a open, public meeting. Um, so with that motion and everybody's testimony, I believe that brings us to the conclusion of tonight's meeting. I want to thank everybody, um, again, e, even including our folks that are joining us via the internet. As you can see, these are not easy decisions to make. Um, we, we take all of your testimony to heart, and, and we, we listen to you, and we'll continue. We'll, we'll have you an answer, you'll know where we're going to be, and it'll be publicly made. With that, I will recess the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.